The City of Maricopa Regular Meeting on Tuesday, December 17th, 2013. At this time, I'd like to have Pastor Hester from Lighthouse Refuge Christian Church, please come forward. She will be giving us the invocation, after which we will have a pledge of allegiance, which I will lead, and we'll go from there. Please stand.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. Thank you Pastor Hester. At this time, we'll move to the roll call, please.
Here.
Councilmember Chapados?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Councilmember Potter?
Present.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to acknowledge that we're moving on to some proclamations, acknowledgements, and awards. We have a special attainment here tonight, in which we'd like to do a penning ceremony for the recently hired Chief Leffler. So we'd invite Chief Leffler to come forward, please, right here to the front. We'd also like to have Judge Sully, our city magistrate, please come forward. He will be administering the oath, and we'll be doing the penning ceremony, so I'll bring that down.
How are you? You're here, good. Great. I in the state your name.
I, Brady Leffler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign, domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of fire chief.
Discharge the duties of fire chief.
For the City of Maricopa.
For the City of Maricopa.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause) The chief's mom is going to put on his pants. (laughter) It's only a pair of men. (laughter) Well, I would be. Well. Well. Congratulations. (applause) And let's hope for you to have a lot of fire. Please come forward. I'd love to have you. Counsel, would you like to come as well? Please. It's going to be a little tight. (laughter) Come on in. There's always room. Everybody try. Everybody try. Which way? (inaudible) Come on in. Everybody in. Push in. Come on, you all. Go for guys in the front. Side by side. Come on down here. Hope they're quicker than this stupid fire. Can we go now? (laughter) All right, Jackie. (applause) Howard, want to see if you can get a picture of you cutting the cake? The first cut? (inaudible) While you're all returning to your seats, I just wanted to announce that there are
some light refreshments in the lobby there, if you'd like to participate. Typically, we would all take a short recess and go out there and participate, but at this time, we have such a long agenda, we've elected to move on. So, thank you very much to Chief Leffler, his family, and especially to all the public safety and firefighters of the City of Maricopa for being here tonight. So, thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to item number four, a report from the mayor. First, I wanted to announce that we have a few committee positions open to anybody who would like to apply. Please send your application to the city clerk. We have a few positions open on the IDA Board, which is the Industrial Development Authority. It deals with financing and bonds, and so if you'd like to participate in that authority or that committee, we'd really appreciate it. Also, there's an opening on the Heritage District. If you live or have a business inside the Heritage District, those are basically the qualifications to participate, and so we would ask that you would submit your name and help the city find better ways to help the Heritage District succeed. So, those are the first things. I also wanted to take a brief moment as well and echo Councilwoman Chapados from her report earlier on the Shop with a Cop program. That was held this Saturday, as well as the Toys for Rides with the Fire Department. Both were incredibly popular and well-done events, and so many thanks to our public service citizens here. We could not have done this without the grand participation by everybody, certainly to our citizens, their generosity. I know that Walmart was a big contributor, and so again, many, many thanks to all those who helped, because without that, we wouldn't have been able to make it possible. I also had the opportunity to go to Ak Chen's Mazikhtas Celebration, which basically translates into Birthday Celebration. It's when they were formed as a community. I had the opportunity of participating with the Ak Chen Council and in their parade, both as a participant and a judge of their floats, and had a wonderful time, so many thanks to the Ak Chen Council for the invite. Also, I wanted to announce that this past week, had the opportunity to meet with the Santa Cruz River Alliance. I've told you many times about what that alliance does, how it is trying to solve the big flood control solution problems that we have. Councilmember Brown was present with me, and we had an opportunity to call on our federal representatives, like we always do, and at this time, Congresswoman Ann Kirkpatrick was able to attend. And I made a promise to many of you, something that I wanted to let you know that I've made good on, and that is, is we always want to make sure that our congressional delegates know that they're welcome in the City of Maricopa. The City of Maricopa, as a city, is a nonpartisan group, and so it's important to get things done, and that's what's really important. And so we, some of you may know, we had Representative Gosar out here a few weeks ago. He gave us a town hall meeting, was able to express some of his ideas and concerns and knowledge of the area. He was once our representative of our district, but Ann Kirkpatrick is our representative now, and so we wanted to make sure that Councilmember Brown and I took the opportunity to extend the same invitation to her. And although she doesn't typically like to do too many town halls, we did want to make sure that she knew she was welcome, and that the, you know, the council chambers would be hers to use if she so desired. She did accept our invitation, and so I believe our staffs will be getting together shortly in the next few weeks to arrange a time to get together and have her out here to have the opportunity to talk with her constituents, which is all of you. So, again, that concludes my report from the mayor at this time. Thank you. Turn it over to the report from the city manager.
Mayor and Counsel, I just have one item. I'd like to bring Bob Goodhue up, our Development Services Manager. He has a new employee he would like to introduce.
(inaudible) like to introduce to you Building, or Development Manager, Robert Mathias. Robert, stand up. (applause) Robert comes to us from the state of Oregon, where he has over 22 years' experience as a building official in Grants Pass, as well as Bend, Oregon. He has a number of technical certifications. I won't go into every single one of them, but it's oodles and oodles, there's a whole bunch of them. So, he brings to us not only his expertise in the codes, but also the administrative, in the case of administration for the development process. More recently, though, Robert has been involved with developing electronic solutions with software companies involving transferring the paper permit and plan review process to paperless. And so we're very excited to have somebody with that type of expertise coming into this organization and looking towards the future, improving our processes with, not only internally here, but with the development community. So, Robert?
This is my second day, so I really didn't have a whole lot prepared, but.
Surprise.
So far, I'm enjoying it. It's, seems like a real lovely city. My wife and I decided we wanted to get out of the cold. Maricopa fit our bill, and I hope I fit yours, and I hope I can live up to Bob's wonderful introduction for me, and I'm going to be available moving forward to answer anybody's questions, and hopefully, we can do some things to help Maricopa become more green and sustainable in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Brown?
If you serve us nearly as well as your name say, Bob Mathias, the great Olympic champion, decathlon champion, you'll be well served.
Actually, he is a cousin of mine.
Really? Wow.
I also have to say that with a name like Robert or Bob, you can't go bad, really.
(laughter) Thank you very much, again. Appreciate it. Welcome. Thank you. City manager, anything else? Tricia? Anything else? She can't hear me. That's the wonderful pit. Tricia?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anything else?
I can't.
No, it's not your fault. The sound here is really weird. You can't hear out here.
No, that completes my answer for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't mean to sound like I was yelling at you. Sorry about that. All right, at this time, we'll move to the call to the public. Call to the public's the opportunity in which you have to come and address the council. We don't typically respond at this time, so if you just wish to convey something to us, we'd invite you to keep your comments to two to three minutes, as we have a very long agenda tonight, so the time is now yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is John Schaefer, and I'm a firefighter and public information officer with the Fire Department. As Mayor Price mentioned, we had our first Toys for a Ride Charity Drive this past Saturday that was hosted by the Fire Department, FOR Maricopa, and the professional firefighters of Maricopa. Pretty simple premise, bring a toy, you get to ride about three or four minutes on a fire truck around town. Excuse me. Personally, in my opinion, it was quite a turnout. We estimated that approximately 500 community members took part and came down and supported the event, and we collected nearly 300 toys. We also were fortunate enough to accept a little over $1,500 in monetary donations, and as you can see, we have put together a little slideshow of some of the fun times that happened on Saturday. Again, we also had Santa and Mrs. Claus, they rode into town on the city's ladder truck, and were welcomed, and sat around and heard wish lists from kids, and also took pictures with them. An event of this nature, and with so many moving parts, couldn't have been done without a bunch of many people getting together and helping us out. So, we'd like to say a special thank you to, first, the Maricopa Community Emergency Response Team volunteers. They helped direct traffic and kind of funnel people in the right direction for parking, and also served as kind of safety monitors. Each one, or one person would ride in the truck, making sure everybody stayed seatbelted and nobody tried to jump out the window or anything. Also, off-duty Maricopa firefighters, captains, chiefs, and administration staff, again, they helped coordinate the event, and then were there just to mingle and to say thank you to the people who came out to support the event. Target Lowe's Home Depot of Casa Grande, all their donations we received from them were directly used to turn our safety trailer into Santa and Mrs. Claus's North Pole Mobile Command, so we like to thank them. Also, again, the professional firefighters in Maricopa, Hayden Construction and Core Construction for their sizable monetary donations, and Hughes Fire Equipment, the people that we go to to repair anything that is still within warranty. They just said, here, take a truck for the day, and you guys can drive it around, so you don't have to use, you know, take another truck out of service. So, again, we like to thank them. And last but not least, the Maricopa and Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce and the Casa Grande Alliance, they all helped proliferate our flyers to make sure that the word of mouth got spread around. We look forward to continuing tradition next year, now that we know we've set a fairly high benchmark. We're going to try to exceed that next year, and again, we'll have a little bit more advanced notice, and again, thank you, and we appreciate everybody coming out and supporting.
Thank you very much. (applause)
I don't do this easily, because my heart is full of Thanksgiving. As a representative for the FOR Maricopa Food Bank, I want to thank the City of Maricopa with all my heart. I thank them for the 500 families a week that we serve, for the 1,000 to 1,200 children who will have something under the tree at Christmas. Without the people in Maricopa, we would not survive. Without the volunteers, we could not do it. And we all come together with one heart, with one purpose, and we are blessed, because we can bless others. I thank you from all of us at FOR Maricopa. I can't name names, because everyone, everyone has helped during this Christmas season. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, Leanne.
Wow, what a tough act to follow. Alls I can say is thank you to the City of Maricopa. I mean, we live in a great city. We had a wonderful Shop with a Cop program, listening to different people here tonight, the firefighters, and what they did for their Toys for Ride drive. It's just incredible to see where this community has gone. The Shop with a Cop program, we had 47 kids that we were able to take on this holiday shopping experience. I believe it was six or seven of those kids were from our Action community, so it's a great thing to see that. We had officers from the Action community. We had an officer from Coolidge come out. This is, this is something that's grown drastically. In our second year, we were able to triple the number of kids that we took. We raised well over $10,000 this year, and it just turned into a great experience. Thank you to the mayor, thank you to Councilwoman Chapados for both being there, participating. I will say, not to knock the firefighters, but we did get Mr. and Mrs. Claus first. And it was just an incredible event to see the kids coming in on a comet bus with our, with our police escorts and everything, and it, it not only lit up the faces of the kids, but the adults inside were all coming out to see what was going on and to take part. So, this is just an incredible community to be part of. It's so deeply rooted in volunteerism and giving, and I'm thankful to be part of it. On a second note, I want to say, as Director of FOR City Maricopa, we are, in the new year coming up, we are launching a new website that's actually going to be forrcitymaricopa.org. It's currently being set up, and it will be one where people can come to the site for volunteer opportunities, organizations can also go onto the site and list their volunteer opportunities. So, we want to be a clearinghouse, so to speak, for everything going on in and around Maricopa, Stanfield, Hidden Valley, the Action community as well. So, keep an eye out for that. January 1st is the launch date, and that's going to be www.forcitymaricopa.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on. Thank you very much for everyone who's participated thus far. Moving on to the minutes, council, item 7.1, 7.2. Can I have a motion to approve, please? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we're moving on to the public hearings. We'll start with public hearing number one. Just as a clarification point, I have several speaker cards up here. You are able to speak at the public hearing on that item and that item only, or you may speak when we get to the item under the actual discussion, participation by the city council, if you'd like as well. So, it's just a, it's just a matter of decision for you who have handed in speaker cards. With that being said, PH 13-11, the mayor and city council should hear public comment on conditional use permit, 13-04, a request by United Quinn, excuse me, Quinn United on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility, purposes to co-locate two microwave dish antennas on a pre-existing cell tower that is owned and operated by Diamond Communications LLC. The site is located at the property address of 45330 West McDavid Road. Does anyone like to speak to this item and this item only? Seeing no one, I'll move on to item 8.2. 8.2, PH 13-12, the mayor and city council should hear public comment regarding the draft development fees, infrastructure improvement plan, and the land use assumption reports which serves as the basis for the development impact fees effective August 1st, 2014. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I do have a presentation. There we go. Just a quick presentation on the process. We're in the process of approving, going through the approval process of the development impact fee adoption. The fees will be effective August 1st, per state statute, and to go through and make them effective for that date, step one of the process is to approve and adopt the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan, then step two is to adopt the development fees themselves. The draft of the development fees and land use assumption and the infrastructure, infrastructure and improvement plan has been presented to council on September 17th in a work session, and a copy of the report was posted on the city's website for 60 days. It was posted on October 3rd, 2013, and then tonight, as part of the process, is a public hearing for the proposed land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan. Then the next step would be to actually, on the proposed date of January 21st, adopt the land use assumption and infrastructure improvement plan, which then kicks off the approval process of the development fees. And the last slide I have is here is kind of a brief overview of the approval and the adoption process. On the left is the land use assumptions and improvement, infrastructure improvement plan. So, in October, council reviewed the draft in September. It was posted in October on the website for a 60-day period, and then tonight would be the public hearing. In January, council, if so, moved to approve, adopt the land use assumption, infrastructure improvement plan, and then that, as I mentioned, would kick off the notice of intent to assess the development fees, and then another 60 days would pass in a public hearing for the proposed fees, and then we'd wait a 30-day process to adopt the fees, and then the fees would be effective, would become effective towards the end of June, beginning of July, before the August 1st deadline. With that.
Counsel, any questions? Nope. Okay. Does anyone wish to speak to this item in the public hearing, 8.2? Seeing no one, and having no questions from council, I will go ahead and close the public hearings at this time, and move on to item nine on the consent agenda. At this time, can I have a motion to approve consent, please?
No.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. This takes us to item 10.1. This is an ordinance. Let me briefly read the first part, the ordinance of the mayor and city council, of the City of Maricopa, Arizona, amending the zoning requirements of Parcels 1, 3, and 4, described in zoning case ZON 05-03, Santa Rosa Springs planned development area, or area development, it's called a PAD, for approximately 166 acres, generally situated south of Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway, State Route 238, west of Porter Road, east of Smith Alignment, and northwest of Farrell Road, within the City of Maricopa Incorporated limits. The parcel of land are situated in a portion of Section 35 of Township 4, Range 3 East of the Gila and Salt River Base and Meridian, Penal County, Arizona. This item is for discussion and action. And at this time, I also have many speaker cards, so I will allow staff to present first, and then we will move to the speaker cards after that. Please.
Mayor, Mayor and Counsel, we actually have the applicant who would like to present some information prior to the public comments. Is that, that's okay?
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
That's it?
Yep.
So, that's the first one?
Mayor and members of the council, for your record, my name is Stephen Earl. My address in Phoenix is 3101 North Central Avenue. It's been my good fortune to represent Elliott Homes for the last 20-some years. They've actually just celebrated their 100th anniversary as a home building company. That's pretty remarkable. Of that time, 40 years here in Arizona. They are the developers of Santa Rosa Springs, Units 1 and 3. Unit 2 was developed by Ryland, now under the hands of someone else, and they will be developing Unit 4. Two weeks ago, when we were here before, a question was raised about access, and two points of access. So, before we get into that conversation, I would like to just go back for a little framework for this. This comes to you as an amendment to an approved PAD, dealing with lot coverage. The desire of Elliott Homes is to increase lot coverage in order to allow them to build more one-story homes, rather than be restricted to two-story homes. They also want to make use of the matrix that you have in your ordinance, by which you have higher design requirements, architectural features, and energy efficiency in solar units, that gives a person the chance to have higher lot coverage. So, that's the basis of their request. It would apply to the project as a whole, but before we get to that request, a little bit more background is appropriate, and that is that the Platts for all four units of Santa Rosa Springs have been approved by the council and re- and improvement plan has been presented to council on September 17th in a work session, and a copy of the report was posted on the city's website for 60 days. It was posted on October 3rd, 2013. And then tonight, as part of the process, is a public hearing for the proposed land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plan. Then the next step would be to actually, on the proposed date of January 21st, adopt the land use assumption and infrastructure improvement plan, which then kicks off the approval process of the development fees. And the last slide I have is here is kind of a brief overview of the, the approval and the adoption process. On the left is the land use assumptions and improvement, infrastructure improvement plan. So, in October, council reviewed the draft in September. It was posted in October on the website for a 60-day period. And then tonight would be the public hearing. In January, council, if so, moved to approve, adopt the land use assumption, infrastructure improvement plan. And then that, as I mentioned, would kick off the notice of intent to assess the development fees. And then another 60 days would pass in a public hearing for the proposed fees, and then we'd wait a 30-day process to adopt the fees. And then the, the fees would be effective, would become effective towards the end of June, beginning of July, before the August 1st deadline. With that...
Counsel, any questions? Nope. Okay. Does anyone wish to speak to this item in the public hearing, 8.2? Seeing no one, and having no questions from council, I will go ahead and close the public hearings at this time, and move on to item nine on the consent agenda. At this time, can I have a motion to approve consent, please? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. This takes us to item 10.1. This is an ordinance. Let me briefly read the first part, the ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Maricopa, Arizona, amending the zoning requirements of parcels 1, 3, and 4, described in zoning case ZON 05-03, Santa Rosa Springs planned development area, or area development, it's called a PAD, for approximately 166 acres, generally situated south of Maricopa-Castagrand Highway, State Route 238, west of Porter Road, east of Smith Alignment, and northwest of Farrell Road, within the City of Maricopa Incorporated limits. The parcel of land are situated in a portion of Section 35 of Township 4, range 3 east of the Gila and Salt River Base and Meridian, Pinal County, Arizona. This item is for discussion and action. And at this time, I also have many speaker cards, so I will allow staff to present first, and then we will move to the speaker cards after that. Please.
Mayor, mayor, council, we actually have the applicant who would like to present some information prior to the public comments. Is that, that's okay?
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
That's it?
Yep.
So, that's the first one? Mayor and members of the council, for your record, my name is Stephen Earl. My address in Phoenix is 3101 North Central Avenue. It's been my good fortune to represent Elliott Homes for the last 20-some years. They've actually just celebrated their 100th anniversary as a home building company. That's pretty remarkable. Of that time, 40 years here in Arizona. They are the developers of Santa Rosa Springs, units 1 and 3. Unit 2 was developed by Ryland, now under the hands of someone else, and they will be developing unit 4. Two weeks ago, when we were here before, a question was raised about access, and two points of access. So, before we get into that conversation, I would like to just go back for a little framework for this. This comes to you as an amendment to an approved PAD dealing with lot coverage. The desire of Elliott Homes is to increase lot coverage in order to allow them to build more one-story homes, rather than be restricted to two-story homes. They also want to make use of the matrix that you have in your ordinance by which you have a higher design requirements, architectural features, and energy efficiency in solar units, that gives a person the chance to have higher lot coverage. So, that's the basis of their request. It would apply to the project as a whole, but before we get to that request, a little bit more background is appropriate, and that is that the plats for all four units of Santa Rosa Springs have been approved by the council and recorded. More importantly, all of the infrastructure required for units 1, 2, and 3 have already been installed, inspected, and are now operative. The, the school site has been set aside. There is a significant access point into the community that's more than one way in and out. There's actually three lanes, which is divided. And, and just from the historical point of view, when this project was created, and I had the opportunity to be involved in that, the significant issue at the time was that Porter Road did not have a, a true intersection. It had an offset intersection with the Maricopa Highway. And it was extremely important to the town that we realigned Porter Road, which meant it had to bend out, and you can see the curve that comes into the property in order for it to have a perpendicular alignment with, with Porter Road on the other side of the highway. In order to do that, that was not an inexpensive fix. It required a contribution of about $500,000, which we shared with the city. And so, in connection with that, I think it's also significant to point out that there was five box culverts that had to be installed in order for water to pass underneath the road and underneath the railroad, to allow that intersection to essentially be operative during all conditions, an all-weather condition. And that was all installed as a part of Phase 1 before we proceeded. And so now, there's a four-lane road section from our entryway up to the highway and over it. Now, we get to the, that's the background for the request. If, if this request is not deemed to be appropriate by the council, then we would simply build two, more two-story homes. But we intend to move forward with the project. We're excited to be back. There's been a lengthy recession that all of us suffered through, and, and now we'd like to build more homes. There's an opportunity to build significant number of new homes in this subdivision where they have finished lots and are ready to go. A couple of the things which we think are important about the lot coverage, number one, staff has reviewed it and recommended approval, subject to, I think, now 10 stipulations. One of the things they were worried about was a signal at the entrance to the project with Porter Road, and we agreed to an additional condition which allows, every time we pull a building permit, we'll pay a sum of money toward that signal. And we already have a stipulation that says that every time we pull a building permit, we will pay toward the bridge at Farrell and Porter Road, the significant regional bridge, which is shown on this overhead projection. In addition to that, we just wanted to point out, since it's, we're all talking about the substance of, of the key access points for this project, that the city has a impact fee system by which they build certain regional pieces of infrastructure. This project so far has paid $850,000 in impact fees. The major, or at least 60% almost of that fee is toward transportation improvements. And in fact, if we go to the next slide, we have a more regional context here which shows the same wash that goes by this property, all the way up, crossing the highway, and going up to what's called Honeycutt Bridge. That bridge was installed through impact fees. And so, the impact fees which this project is paying were part of the impact fees that helped pay for that. We have 642 units left. We've built 146. We have 640 left. If we multiply the new impact fee just approved tonight, or maybe it was on the agenda for tonight, it's $5,210. So, if we multiply out the 642 lots times the impact fee of $5,210, this project will pay $3,344,000 in impact fees. As best as we can determine, that will be a total of $4,193,000 in impact fees for the total project of units 1 through 4. Significant to that is that the, that the bridge that was just built on the very same wash at Honeycutt was, was about $3 million. So, part of what we're going to be paying over the next series of lots will, could help build this bridge at, at the corner of Farrell and Porter. In addition to the actual fee we're paying for that, because we have a separate fee that we're paying for that, but in addition, we, if the council wanted to, they could amend the impact fee system to add other regional bridges. In fact, when we agreed to the original payment for this, as when we were doing every house, it was told to us way back in 2006 that there was going to be a fund created for 13 bridges, and this was one of the important bridges. We certainly agree that this bridge is an important bridge to build, and we, we created this regional exhibit to show you Vanderbilt Farms, which is now, I think, owned by Fulton Homes and renamed to Aldera or something. But it's, it's sectionally two sections of land. Certainly, when they build, they're going to need to have an all-weather access over this wash in order to get up to the highway. We don't know what their timing is, but that's a significant element as well. Final point we wanted to make is that we have also created an emergency access through the school site out to Porter Road, so there really are two points of access. And as the council knows, when we build unit 4, which we will begin as soon as we're 80% through with units 1, 2, and 3, that will have another low-water crossing, which means it will handle floodwaters of about the 10- to 17-year variety. So, we'll have another access point out of the project. We, we pointed all those things out because the last meeting, we kind of got off on to access as opposed to the actual request, which is lot coverage. You certainly have the right to deal with lot coverage any way you wish, but these are actually finished lots that we're building on. So, we felt there was justification. Planning Department felt it was appropriate. Planning Commission felt it was appropriate. We've had a neighborhood meeting since. We know one of the councilmen, councilwomen appeared at that as well. We have several neighbors here in favor of going forward with this application. We think some have sent you emails, because candidate, they'd like to see their neighborhood built out. And, and they'd like to see the monies that we're now contributing go toward building the main bridge, it would be the 100-year storm bridge, to create a permanent second point of access. The last point I would make about the, and we know there's people that are concerned about this, as we are as well, we want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. That's the reason I went through the various payments we intend to be making over the next period of time. But it's a pretty rare occurrence, as we understand it, for the wash and the railroad crossing to be closing at the same time. I don't know that it's happened all that frequently, and I understand the city may in fact be working with the railroad to try and prevent that, that important crossing from being blocked in the future, which would obviously help all of us. I'd be glad to respond to any questions. I would tell you that Derek England from, from Elliott Homes is here, as well as Alan Bowden, who is the planner from LVA on this project. We're prepared to respond to any questions you might have about the project.
Thank you. Council questions? This time? Thank you, sir.
Keep out.
I'll throw it back to staff, then, if they had any questions or concerns or additional information for council, or has that outlined it pretty well? Okay. With that, I have a few speaker cards here. That was Stephen who just presented to us. If you please keep your comments to just a few minutes, that would be great. First one I'd like to invite up is Dave Martin. Dave, are you here? Please come forward.
Honorable mayor, council members, much of my thunder was already stolen. Quite a well-done job, I might say. I'm here to speak in favor of the ordinance. Let's not confuse the issues raised regarding a railroad crossing, a wash with no bridge, a single egress for the subdivision, a light at the entrance to our subdivision, and dirt being washed onto the streets in Santa Rosa Springs, with the reason for Elliott Builders' request for a variance on the footprint of the homes proposed for the lots already planted for Santa Rosa Springs. Yes, there's always a chance of a train derailment, even though the tracks at Porter Road are fairly new, and in my opinion, are very well-maintained by the railroad. There's always a chance for a flash flood in a wash if enough rain or snow falls upstream. I believe the chance of those two occurring at the same time on the same section of Porter Road minuscule at best. Not to diminish the importance of our safety, fire, ambulance, and first responder access to Santa Rosa Springs is of utmost importance to us, but completing the development is also important to us. Holding this request for a variance hostage to get a bridge over a wash, a traffic light at the entrance, or a second egress defies logic. There are some residents of Santa Rosa Springs who are upset with the HOA and with Elliott Builders, not because Elliott builds an inferior product, not because Elliott uses inferior materials or paint, but because some residents have received notices of rule violations and notices that their houses need painting. Most of those houses were built not by Elliott, but by the other builder. As a homeowner in Santa Rosa Springs, and I might say it's an Elliott home, and I'm very proud to be in it, and I, I really like it, and I wouldn't trade it for any of the other houses in Maricopa, and I've looked at all of them in every subdivision, I want to see the development finished. With more homes comes more tax revenue. With more tax revenue comes the ability to get bridges built over the wash, to get lights installed at our entrance. With more homes built, there will be less erosion and less dirt washing onto the streets. With more homes will come the ability of the homeowners to have a greater influence in our HOA. With more homeowners, there will be less budget restraints. We will be able to have winter grass. We will be able to water in the winter to keep our green belts and vegetation alive and prospering. With more homes, there will be more eyes to keep the graffiti out, to keep the dumping of garbage and yard waste out of our subdivision. We can discourage the use of Santa Rosa Springs as a lover's lane, and maybe we can keep the used prophylactics from being thrown into the street. My wife and I ride through all the subdivisions in Maricopa, and none of the other subdivisions have we seen used prophylactics laying in the street like we have in Santa Rosa Springs. And it's because there aren't enough houses out there to police that kind of activity. At the HO meeting December 4th, the president of the board invited everyone to, in attendance, to tour the Elliott Homes at 67th and baseline in Levine. My wife and I accepted that invitation, and we toured those models, as they are the ones that are most comparable to the ones being planned for here in Santa Rosa Springs. We were pleased with what we saw. While the backyards were not oversized, they were adequate, but more importantly, they are what is selling. By granting the variance, it enables Elliott Builders to offer some enhancements that will lead to greater tax revenue. Again, with greater tax revenue, we are back to being able to accomplish and address some of the things being complained about. I have spoken to several homeowners in the Santa Rosa Springs subdivision, and many, like us, want the development completed. With the completion of Santa Rosa Springs will come the second entrance. Accordingly, we are in support of Elliott Builders' request for this variance, and we respectfully request the city council to approve without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Is Jeffrey here? Jeffrey Donahue?
It's kind of hard, you, you did great. So, I just have a few things to say. Basically, on the zoning, on the lot sizes, you know, it really needs to be, to go in favor of Elliott Homes. First of all, we're real happy that there's, you know, start to build and everything. But if they're only allowed to build, you know, two-story homes, what's going to end up happening, I would believe it would take, I don't know exactly what percentage, but probably a good, large number of cells would be taken away of just having, you know, just two stories as one product. You know, people need to have, you know, more to look at than, you know, just one product. And two, I don't know if you've ever seen 5, 6, 7, 800 two-stories, all in one subdivision, but, you know, at, at first glance, it looks like condos or army barracks. So, basically, you know, the main thing is we're happy that they're here to start building, but, you know, not going with the lot sizes what they are now to have all two stories. Basically, people need more product. They need to have, you know, one stories to be able to look at, plus the two stories. And that's all I can say. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Appreciate it. Alan? Alan Bowden? Bowden? No? Okay. Come up if you need to later. At this time, Joanne Miller. Joanne?
Mayor, council members, as you know, as I spoke the last time, my name is Joanne Miller, and I live in Santa Rosa Springs. And my home is not a Elliott home, so I am not here as a cheerleader necessarily for Elliott Homes. I think their homes look wonderful. I think the building would be just terrific. I personally don't like the larger homes on a smaller lot. I, I think it looks like condos, not just two-story ones and that. That's my own personal opinion. There isn't enough reason, and I know there's enough residents now that just want the thing built, so they're not going to complain necessarily of that. Problem that I see is obviously the access. Not that it's a bad thing, but the previous councils have okayed something, short-sighted just to build. Everything is just built, which is great, you know, you need to have that. But if you don't take into consideration public safety, it was pleasant to hear this man talk about what they plan to do down the road and the impact fees which are to build a bridge, but lots of promises are always made and not enough, you know, promises aren't always kept. So, I'm just stating my concern that I would like to see something in concrete that this will be resolved. If you build 400 homes, that's 800 cars, that's a lot of traffic in a 100-foot stretch to go over the railroad tracks. And when he said it was miniscule of happening with the flood and the railroad tracks, the last time it happened, it happened to me, and it was 25 minutes to get into the, into the neighborhood. So, yes, it does happen, and it doesn't happen that infrequently, unfortunately. But that is my own personal opinion, and I realize that there's probably not much that we could do to stop that variance, although in the new zoning code, I'm hoping that that's addressed, and not everybody given a pass just to get the building moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Is Inger Herbert here? Did I get that right? Inger? No?
My name's Inger Abear. I'm one of the original purchasers in Santa Rosa Springs. I'm also a ex-new home sales agent. I understand both sides of what's going on. I have been stopped by the train, however, I don't feel that the issue with the train and the, the bridge should stop a company like Elliott Homes from... and the bridge should stop a company like Elliott Homes from finishing out a community that they started. Had the recession not happened, this community would be just about done, and there would be no saying about bridges or railroads. If they have an issue with the railroad, it needs to be addressed with the railroad, because they're the ones that are stopping the trains. I have been stopped by the train. It is a pain, but this is an issue with a company that didn't walk away. They didn't walk away from their community. They didn't leave us with dilapidated models, with broken windows, with dishevel everywhere. They left our community nice. They made a promise that we will be back, and they are. And they shouldn't be put down for actually standing up and being a good company. They should be able to build and grow and make our community better. And that's what they want to do. And frankly, I used to live in Sanita. I don't want my whole community to be two-story homes where you have no privacy in your backyards. I want single-story homes. The fact that the lot coverage is going to be better, or less, that there's going to be less backyard, to anybody that owns a home in that community right now, that's a benefit to you. Your home will now have a benefit of a larger backyard than the homes that are coming. So it's going to bring more revenue into the city, it's going to make our HOA better, it's going to make our community better. Yes, I understand there will be more cars. That's what happens. Any community in Maricopa has a lot of cars. We are going to have more egress entries in, and we live in Arizona. It doesn't rain that much. So I'm willing to wait on a bridge that will come at some point than to sit here with another year of any more dirt lots across the street from my house. I want, I moved to Maricopa so my son would have children to play with, have clean air, have a small-town feel. And right now, I've lived for five years with a dirt lot across from me, a dirt lot to the side of me, and a dirt lot behind me. It's time for them to be able to rebuild, and that's all that needs to be said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is Derek England here? Derek?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Derek England. I represent Elliott Homes. Elliott Homes, I'm just going to make this relatively brief, but we're a fourth-generation family builder, private, and Harry Elliott is our, Harry Elliott III is our current CEO, and he's done everything he's been expected to do. Every promise he's made for every community, every HOA, he's followed through on. We simply want to bring back the same product, the same floor plans that we've built currently. We've enhanced them. There's new elevations with regards to architectural details, energy features. We're planning to go with solar panels as a standard. The lot coverage question basically dictates that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to build a single-story home bigger than about 1,500 square feet on these lots. Currently, we have homes upwards of 1,900 square feet, single-story. We don't want to make the threat that we're only going to put two stories in there, but we're really limited if we can't get a little bit more variance. Because when you look at the footprint, it includes the garage, because it's not a livable space. It includes the porch and the patio, so, you know, you're looking at 1,500 square feet, but you're really limited in what you can build. And as a sales manager, we take a look at market studies on a regular basis almost every quarter that tells us what buyers want. And buyers want three bedrooms, two bath, and about 1,800 square feet, or four bedrooms. And the two-story option is the only way that you can get that fourth and fifth bedroom, not necessarily with this lot size, you can get a sixth bedroom, but you kind of get the idea of what we're looking for. We're just trying to come back and not stay away any longer. We've maintained the HOA, we've followed through on our promises to continue to fund the shortfall of the HOA, so that the homeowners that live out there don't have to live in, you know, with dirt everywhere. They have grass, they have playground structures that have been maintained. So we're happy to pay our impact fees and continue to add money, as expected, to the city, and to continue to help this community grow. And I think with another 600, 700 homes in the neighborhood, everyone wins. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Derek. That concludes our speaker cards. With that, I would turn it over to council for questions. Council? Yes, start with Councilwoman Chappados, and then on to Councilmember Potter.
Thank you, everybody, for sharing your comments. I just want to share my personal observations. I think one of the reasons that the decision to table was made at the last meeting was because of the timing of the town hall meeting. I think council as a whole, we discussed what were the comments and the feedback from the homeowners. That's one of the reasons I chose to go to the town hall meeting, and what I heard was very positive. There was very, very good input from the homeowners, there was good input from the board, which currently is Elliott Homes. Personally, I don't have any objections to granting the variance. I think it's a good thing. I think it brings Maricopa, you know, the builders are coming back. We're looking at a lot of new building permits every month. I think for me, one of the issues that was brought home was that this is probably the only community in Maricopa that only has one true entrance and egress. The temporary one, the emergency one that you're referring to, that's under lock and key until the fire department, and only the fire department, has access to that lock. So it is truly in an emergency situation. I did hear some positive things from Mr. England at the town hall meeting and tonight from Steve, forgive me, I've forgotten your last name. But I also was doing some math quickly up here. If you're going to look at that second access when 80% build out, that's 518 homes that need to be built, not necessarily sold, but I'm assuming you're not building a lot on spec either at this point. So that is a concern. Again, I do agree with a lot of the comments that have been made about the frequency of the train and the water and the wash running all at the same time. Elliott has said that they do have plans to have a low-water crossing accessing Farrell. It's not an ideal situation, and I empathize with the residents of Santa Rosa Springs, but I think this is a good thing for Maricopa. I'm personally in favor of granting the variance. I don't have any objections. I've looked at all the diagrams and stuff with the supporting documentation. You guys have some wonderful ideas that you're going to be adding to the homes there, and I think it's going to be good for the community. The other thing, too, folks, as of next March, when Copper Sky opens, that end of town is going to see a lot of new opportunities coming, so I think Santa Rosa is going to be an important part of that. So I am in favor of the variance, but again, thank you to Elliott Homes and thank you to all the residents who gave us the input.
Thank you. Councilwoman Potter?
We have a question for that. Regarding safety, I know the question isn't that, but with the plan for the pad, one, two, and four, or excuse me, one, three, and four, the way it's laid out now regarding the bridge overpass, everything considered, will that exacerbate the problem? Make it harder if it's the way it is right now in that area of Santa Rosa Springs? In other words, will it get worse the way that Elliott Homes has laid out to you regarding, and staff regarding, you know, the future, how it goes out?
Through the mayor, councilman, I'm not, could you restate that, please?
On, with the plan, how it's, with the variance and so forth, I'm not sure if that really, really matters, but it depends on sale of a home and residents moving in.
I see.
Well, my question is, assuming they're sold and, you know, new people moving in, is there enough planning involved with all the different situations regarding safety to curtail any future problems that make it worse than it is already regarding the railroad and wash and so forth?
Okay, I understand. And there's two kinds of ways to answer that. In terms of the lot coverage issue, the lot coverage issue really has no effect on the safety, in my opinion. And that's literally the one in front of us. In terms of the number of houses, I think it'd be fair to say, as more people move, the likelihood of a train stopping and a flood being there doesn't change, no matter how many houses are there. The likelihood of somebody having an emergency during the rare window when both accesses are blocked, I guess, does proportionally go up if there's more people living in here. But that's, again, that does go down once they hit 80% and build the low-water crossing on the backside, which gives them another potential way in, even if a train is running. Does that answer the question to some degree?
Yeah, I just want to make the problem worse as far as, I mean, I know it's already been approved as far as the current. So I don't know if there's anything else that we can do to help alleviate that problem, you know, working with them. You know, I'm trying to not make it, you know, I'm trying to make it not worse than it is now, improve it hopefully regarding the safety of the wash and so forth in that area, because as it stands right now, it is only one entrance in Santa Rosa Springs. So again, I know it's already approved of how the lots sizes are and they can build, you know, whenever. But what I really want to get at is not making it worse, but improve the situation for Santa Rosa Springs and the area of Porter Road going south to Farrell.
The only option I've been able to come up with that we could do that would make things better would be to complete the Porter Road Bridge sooner.
Can you repeat that?
The only thing that I've been able to come up with that we could do that would make things better or better sooner would be to complete the Porter Road Bridge sooner than it's, would be for the city to pony up and build it sooner rather than later. Councilman?
Okay, so I have a question then that extends on that. So if I heard the applicant right, we talked about additional negotiations that they have agreed to add additional funding towards a bridge or a light. Is that correct? Am I correct in that assumption?
Not exactly, Mayor. In the original development agreement, the developer was contributing a certain number of dollars per household towards that regional bridge, the Porter Road Bridge. Their total contribution, when they're all done, if I remember, was something around, and it's a little bit of guesswork, because we don't know what that bridge is going to cost yet, 10, 15% of the cost of the bridge. The rest of that bridge is coming from contributions from other developers in other areas. That was part of the original development. What they've agreed to recently is some more money for a stoplight at Porter further up.
Okay, I guess, and I guess this is an issue ultimately, and I don't mean to get off topic, and so Dennis, correct me if I do here, but as we're talking about the PAD, as we're talking about this issue, I mean, is it possible that instead we see that money that comes in for the stoplight, is it possible for council to say, if they so desire, that we'd like to see that money basically set aside for the bridge at Porter Road, so that it could happen at some point? So basically, sequestering that money specific to that issue? Because, I mean, the discussion earlier was, you know, promise is broken. Well, is that, is that possible to do then, as we approve this PAD, if we go down that road, to set that aside?
Mr. Mayor, that's not the current, we're about in a stipulation. We would have to call-
To the developer about that issue. It's not, right now, the money's for the stoplight.
Okay.
Through the mayor, I don't know that, I've talked to the developer at some length, and I don't know that the developer is necessarily adverse to where the money goes necessarily.
I was going to say, the money becomes fungible at some point unless planning says that the stoplight is more important than the bridge, but, I mean, that's, I guess, that's the ultimate question, because I think, I think when you're talking public safety, you know, stoplights are important. We have a stoplight at the railroad tracks currently, but what we don't have is a secondary access to get over that wash if it is flooded, if there is a train there, and to get around, and that becomes a public safety access from the city as a whole. And so from a fungibility standpoint, whether it's going to the light or whether it's going to the bridge, I mean, certainly would help the bridge be built a lot faster. The applicant also had a potential question or discretion.
And I think, Mayor, one thing to remember, too, there is, the city's working on moving the Amtrak station, and that will resolve this problem also with the train-
And stopping in front of the entrance.
Right, right, right. No, I understand that, but again, thinking long-term, thinking bigger than this, and thinking that this is a, this is a council that's trying to think beyond just the here and now. I mean, you're talking about essentially starting or creating some sort of a minor loop system throughout the city, and this creates a secondary background. We talked tonight about potential possibilities of things that could hang up our 347, and so as hard as we're working towards this, and as fast as we're moving, it could come to a screeching halt, heaven forbid, something towards it. So this is just another way of saying it's sequestering that money towards the building of a bridge, which is theoretically in the CIP anyways, but it would push that, from an advancement standpoint, towards the completion of it, thereby increasing public safety, thereby helping the residents of this area, future residents in other areas, et cetera. So that's kind of my view of this, and was kind of laying that out for council, somewhat for, you know, discussion here, but also wanted to hear from the applicant there.
Mayor Price, just to answer your question, to put on the record, Elliott Homes has no problem with the money that we're agreeing to pay in connection with the signal to be used for the bridge, if that was important to legal counsel. It doesn't, to us, it doesn't matter. We agree that this bridge is an important regional structure, and even the access over the wash that we're going to build with unit four is not an all-weather access. So again, the bridge is the regional structure that's needed, and we made the comment in my presentation about the impact fees, that we're not saying that you should spend money from the impact fees on this bridge, but this project will, over the course of the units that we're talking about, put millions of dollars into that fund, and you have the right to determine in that program where you spend funds, but I agree, it would take an amendment to your current program to include any new bridges. But we just noted that one was built with those funds over Honeycutt.
Sure. So again, in-
We're fine with whatever you decide.
So my question, Moers, to the council is, is if, do you have objections with it, instead of going to a stoplight, do you have objection going to a permanent bridge? So let's go Councilwoman Brown, and then over to Councilwoman Chappados.
Sequester that money in or divert it to the bridge. Is there enough money to advance the bridge construction?
Through the mayor, Councilwoman Brown, no, there's not nearly enough. Again, we're kind of guessing, because we don't know how much the bridge is going to cost. I'm guessing it's around $3 million. As it stands currently, Santa Rosa Springs is funding somewhere around 10% of that bridge. If we were to divert the money from the traffic signal, that would increase to somewhere around 18, 18 to 20% of the cost of the bridge. The rest would have to come either from other developers or from within the CIP, or, I guess, from anywhere.
Councilwoman Chappados?
For Elliott Homes, what's the plan for unit five? What's going on there?
Unit four?
It's a school, donation school.
If there's a school there, then to me, a signal is vitally important. We had the same issue with Butterfield Elementary before there was a signal at Donovan, Maricopa Grove Parkway, and Honeycutt. So if there's future plans for a school, and if the building goes, as we all hope it does, that signal's going to be vitally important, because I'm just guessing here, but I'm betting most people are going to go north on Porter as opposed to south.
Council, any other comments or questions or considerations here? Yes, Councilwoman Kimball?
I'd just like to echo Peg's comments, and the first speaker, I think his name was Bill, in regards to, in support of the variance to change the lot coverage. The subject at hand, I think, right now is in fact just that, the lot coverage. It's not about the ingress egress, or the stoplight, or the bridge. Excuse me, I think that those can be addressed at a later date, although they are of some concern, obviously, to most of the members of this council and to individuals that live in the community, but, excuse me, covering from a cold. But the subject at hand is lot coverage, and I'm in full support of the builder's request.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Farrell?
Good day, sir. We move to approve ordinance 13-15.
Support. Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, we need to move to a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Kimball?
Yes.
Councilmember Potter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Councilmember Chappados?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Item 10.2, this is a resolution of the mayor and city council, supporting the enactment of legislation that ensures women veterans' needs are met. This is for discussion and action, and this was discussed earlier, and so I want to throw it to Councilwoman Gussi, and then over to Councilmember Brown.
This one had actually come through the Women in Municipal Government- This, um, had actually come through the Women in Municipal Government, through the National League of Cities. I had brought this as a suggestion for us to move legislation forward in doing something to help our women vets. And some of the items that I added to this resolution don't kind of fit, because when we read a resolution, it goes whereas, and so forth. So these are just additional facts that I brought to the table. In fiscal year 2009 and fiscal year 2010, PTSD, hypertension, and depression were the top three diagnosed categories for women veterans treated at the VHA, the Veterans Health Administration. But these are not gender-specific. So about 1 in 5 women seen at the VHA respond yes when screened for military sexual trauma. And this is where Councilmember Brown was going more specific. This has not been addressed, it hasn't been addressed nationally, and too often, when we bring this, this conversation up, it gets pushed under the rug. Gender-specific healthcare is forecasted to increase by 40%. That means from 2010 to 2013. The solution was to build rural VAs, but the thing is that, for example, a woman who lives here in the city of Maricopa has to travel to get a gender-specific healthcare, has to travel to the VA either in Phoenix or in Tucson. And if that woman doesn't have transportation, she doesn't have the means to get there, she won't get the gender-specific healthcare that's required. And these clinics don't provide the gender-specific. What I'm talking about is gynecology and just that women, healthcare that women need. And lastly, women vets in transitional housing has increased to 48% from fiscal year 2009 and to 2010. Most of our homeless women are actually carrying their children too. So that makes it very difficult to be placed in a homeless shelter when they're only taking care of either men or single women. So it makes it very difficult for them, and here we are trying to place a large amount, and 48, it's increased by 48% in one year. This is, and the last thing that I just wanted to add was, 1.8 million women veterans have been honor, have honorably, honorably served the armed services. The number has doubled since 1990. So this is a problem that's occurring, and it's, it's increasing. We don't find solutions to these problems now. Next couple of years, it's just going to be astronomical and out of control. And that's all I wanted to say about it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Brown?
Well, when I spoke earlier, concerns I had, I was not aware of Councilwoman Gussi's resolution. I applaud that resolution, it's rather expansive, and it's an omnibus type of resolution. But I would want to incorporate it in that, if she agrees to it, I don't know how far we can run with this, frankly, but if, that the fact that in the past five or 10 years, there've been a historic number of females in the military, all branches, who've been assaulted and sexually abused, to the extent that many women are not even volunteering to go into service anymore. It's an alarming rate, and very little's been done about it. Now, I think all of us should be concerned about it. I have a cousin whose daughter is abused in service, so it's, it's come home sort of directly. But it, it should be incorporated in what her resolution speaks to, and I applaud what she's, what she's offering.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? If not, Councilwoman Gussi, would you make a motion with your amendments, and if, if you so agree with Councilmember Brown's amendments, throw those all in at once so that we can move the item?
And I'd like to include what Councilwoman Chapados had mentioned, that we need to encourage our sister cities, or cities within the state of Arizona, to make sure that they pass these type of resolutions. Because these issues aren't going to come to the forefront until we bring them. And the only way that we could bring them for these large amount and growing population of veteran women is if we, as cities, adopt resolutions like this. So I move to, with the added information, and, and hopefully what Councilmember Brown had added also.
Okay. So you're moving with your amendments plus Councilmember Brown's amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
So it's been motion and second, and any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10.3, we're going to discuss and possibly take action on a request to approve the city of Maricopa's 2014 legislative agenda. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is, I think, my fifth time coming back here for the legislative agenda, 2014 session's almost on us here. So I just wanted to, to run through this and make sure you have any questions, anything specific you wanted to meet or focus on. Of course, our goal is to get direction from council so we can focus our efforts in line, in alignment with your efforts. Our state agenda, what we're going to try to do is, of course, protect revenues. We need to protect our, the monies. It is a, they call it state shared, but basically it's state-collected, and then they send it to us, and they need to keep sending it to us. We need to oppose cost shifting on the cities and towns, protect our local control. Sometimes they think they know better than we do. And then always look for, for positive reforms, economic development tools, and, and what I spend about half my time doing is stopping, doing no harm, trying to stop bad ideas from making it through that, that hurt the cities. Implementation, of course, we work with the League of Cities. We're out there. I will communicate with council on the hot issues as, as they come up, and, and ask individuals to help, help me when, when needed. We can target individually, or do all hands on deck, and get everybody talking to who we need to talk to. So, and I, and if there's an issue where it's, it's unclear, where there's a dicey issue, or just want to get some clarification, I'll bring that back to you to make sure that, I want to make sure that I represent the full council. Expectations on state bills, a little bit of preview. It's early now, there's not a lot going on out there, which scares me. We will manage the TPT implementation. There are a couple of cleanup bills out there. We, you know, depends on what they mean by cleanup. I don't know, but we're going to, we're going to watch them like a hawk. There is a lot of support for the restoration of, of HERF funding. I don't think they'll retro us, but I, I, I do think there's momentum building for the restore our, our HERF funding levels. We'll also, we'll rerun the pinch point bill. I'll help out with our annexation. This is a very technical, specific bill that got caught up in the bigger battles last year. We will watch closely any builder-sponsored bills. They, the builders, they're, they have a lot of leverage, they, they have some, some good say down there. We want to make sure that, that we get a fair shake. There's, there's initiatives kind of died, the flat tax. I know there's some fire issues that are out there floating that we're involved with. The big unknown. I put the big unknown now because I think, two months from now, I will probably be before you, telling you about something that I had no idea was coming at this point. So right now, I don't know what it is, but two months from now, probably middle of February, I'll be going, oh my gosh. Proposed federal legislative goals. Again, these are our standard issues, grade separation, of course, flood control. There's a lot of talk about transportation funding and gas tax, and how do we, how do we reap in the revenues to pay for highways now that everybody gets better mileage, and there are a lot of cars, like the mayor drives, that, that don't use regular fuels. We, so, there's a, equity issues there. The tribal relations, of course, and, and just be watching for that low-hanging fruit, things that, that either benefit or harm us, and, and we'll, we'll get into those if, if need be. Implementation of our federal agenda, like I say, we, we'll always advocate for support of this. We have our, our single trip to Washington DC. We, we will come in if need be, if, if our lobbyist, Bob Holmes, says we need to be there. If something happens with the, the water bills, with the grade separation, we will do one of our 48-hour turnarounds, make it there if need be, but we're not going to go there unless there's something we can actually accomplish, other than our, our March trip, which we do our, our Hill trip, and that, that's always very important, just to have that once a year. Go there, you know, check, be in the offices, shake hands. We're getting a lot of activity, a lot of congressional members coming here. The more, if we can get all nine of our House delegation to, to come, and I, I spoke in Maricopa, I'd be thrilled. And then, again, if need be, I'll seek additional council direction. Want to make sure that, that we're representing the city on these issues, and, and some, some are clear-cut, some are not so clear-cut. Implementation strategy, you know this, I, I think we all know this by heart. We, strong regional support, which we have built and maintained. Our squeaky wheel strategy, we're always talking about grade separation, we're always talking about flood control. No stone unturned. This puts Mary at a disadvantage where we'll be applying for everything. We're hoping for a Tiger 6, but we, if it's out there and there's a chance we're going to, we're going to get it, we'll apply, we'll ask, we'll talk, we'll knock on doors, we'll, we'll catch people in the hallways, we'll do what we have to do to squeak and try to find that money. And then the balanced funding strategy. You know, if we can get, get money out of one entity, we say, hey, look, you know, they're pitching in, why not you? And so we, we kind of, you know, make sure everybody's bringing money to the table. If we can just get everybody to bring a little bit, we'll be good. And that includes the city. We have our money for the grade separation. Adopting a legislative agenda allows us, the city staff, like I say, to focus our efforts so that we stay in line with our council priorities. And so I'm, I'm here for, for questions, comments, anything you're worried about. I open to council.
Thank you. Councilmember Potter, question?
Thanks, Mayor. Paul, did you go back to the screen regarding our state items, and there was, you had in there flat tax?
Yes.
I have a question regarding, regarding that.
Right, so one more. Where's my flat tax?
Not that far.
I lost it.
Is it?
Oh, there it is. Yes.
Is it, I haven't heard much of that going into this legislation. Do you, has there been discussion about that?
Meznard had a, a tax committee that he put together in the, in the summer, going into the fall. They were meeting and trying to talk about different types of tax reforms. Kind of couldn't get any traction. No one really was sure why they were meeting, but the, we thought the underlying meeting was to try to adopt some type of flat tax. But you don't know who you're going to hurt in that, anytime you miss the tax code, so.
So what would, and I know there's, it's early, I guess.
Yeah.
But as far as the city's finances concerned, going state income tax, I'm guessing, flat tax, or a sales tax?
Yeah. Well, it, it's, it's very unclear. They've been, have a hard time getting it handled. There's no proposals out there, other than your general, they, they promised to be revenue-neutral, but that's always hard when you're trying to translate this. So I, I don't have much good information on this, other than I think it's dying on the vine. I don't see political will. This is not being talked about. It's, but it's one of those ones that, that may catch fire later on.
Maybe a question for Brian. Is there one way or the other, I know the state says revenue-neutral, but as far as behavior and, you know, actual revenues to the, the state and the city and so forth, one way or the other, flat tax versus a sales tax, is there any implications of, or which would benefit the city more or hurt the city less, looking right now?
Looking right now would be hard to say. It depends on what the flat tax would be. It depends on the, what percentage they would put it at or not put it at. So it, it would really be hard to say, right now, what would be best for the city.
Okay. So until we know more, if it, if they make that just die on the vine, until we know more, it's, it's really not...
No, if, if there's a proposal, there's ideas, we'll, we'll calculate those and make sure that they do hold us revenue-neutral, and, and we will ratchet it up as, as it seems to drift off that neutral point. But, but no, we, we have, the league is watching this. Everybody's watching this, and, and we, we don't feel it's going to grab hold, but, but definitely, if, if they had a proposal, we would be there, just like we were at TPT, just, you know, saying, hey, we, we balanced our budget. We've lived through this recession. We're, we're on the upswing. Don't, you know, don't hurt us by these, these, this change, this meaningless, or not meaningless, but this readjustment for the sake of change.
Thank you. Councilman Chapados?
Paul, thank you. And Mayor, you may have to jog my memory. One of the things I'd like to see us do, when I was at the AZ League of Cities and Towns Conference in Oro Valley in August, a lot of the mayors said that they had specific support of their council, whether it's through action or a vote. Is that something we can add for state issues?
I think that was...
So we actually have a stronger voice?
I think the resolution committee, many, I've talked to other cities after that, and some cities do go and, and bring that resolution list, seeking to support or not support and/or add. And I, I think, as we, I think that would be something that we will include this year or two, get that to council early, let, show the issues, and, and allow the mayor to go there with a full backing and be able to speak and say the council supports, not just the mayor supports. The, the resolution committee is a, it's, it's not, hasn't been as effective as it had been, but, but I think it'll build more, but I think it's just a good practice to, to take time, bring that before council, and I will, I promise I'll do that.
Yes, we have a speaker card. Henry Wade.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I just had one issue as, as I was listening to Paul's presentation, not necessarily issue, but just an observation, if you will. And I, I know by virtue that you do represent the entire community, by virtue of the fact that you are elected officials, what have you, but I was hoping that you could perhaps have something articulated in this document that says, reach out to the community, seek input from the community, get some, some information from the community itself to support the council in this effort, in this agenda effort. That's all of my observation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think that's a great point. I know the Chamber of Commerce has a civic affairs committee that takes issues to the, to their board and so forth, so I think, along with the Chamber of Commerce and any, and the community members that are involved, I think that's a great idea.
Councilman Brown?
Paul, we have seen in the past, any legislation which is builder-friendly is unfriendly to municipalities. So I'm glad that you put that in there, and I would hope that you would watch that very closely.
Yes.
As well as anything that might smell like it might...
Yeah, the, what's really...
Wash some money away from cities.
What's been troubling is, is in the implementation of TPT, the construction sales tax and the, the split on that, the rule process has been, not been taking place, and, and we haven't seen much from some of the builder lobbyists. And, and so we're kind of on the watch to make sure that, that they're not behind the scenes, trying to, you know, change the, what was decided on last year on that. So, so how the, the implementation of, of the construction sales tax, that split between retail and, and construction, was left loose intentionally, and, and so there may be a little bit of a tug-of-war to make sure that, that it's split down the, the middle. Although, what I've heard is they're not happy with how it was, was done. They want to, they want to do some modifications. We will watch that one very closely.
We cannot afford any more sweeps.
No, and, and we can't afford any more, you know, relocating our ability to collect sales tax for things to go on in our city, being transferred to another city. That, that was, that would just ruin us. You know, you build here, you should pay your taxes here, we should get the benefit of that, not somewhere else. And, and I think it was a good compromise. It wasn't perfect, but it, for the repair and replacement, they will pay sales tax at where they buy the replacement parts, but if it's new construction, if it's additions, where it enhances the value, they will pay construction sales tax here, as they always have. That was the majority of our say, we need to stick with that.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Mayor, just a, a quick comment on, on Paul. When he started this presentation, he started off by saying, this is, this is the time coming up in front of us. And I gotta tell you, we can't be represented any better than we can with Paul. Paul takes a, a huge passion in his job, dealing with this, at the state level, and when I'm at the state level talking with, with, with the representatives or our senators or anybody at the state level, and they ask where I'm from, and when I tell them where I'm from, the very first question is, do you know Paul? And of course, I know Paul. He, he gets around well, he's a, we're very well-represented. And Paul, I, I thank you so much for all of your hard work that you do for us up at that state level. And with that said, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve agenda item 10.3.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
At this time, move to item 10.4. This is a signing event allowing the mayor and members of the council to possibly sign the Ethics Code Acknowledgement and Agreement document as stipulated in the Maricopa Code, Sections 2-131 through 2-135. This is for discussion and participation. So, council, we did approve this 60 days ago, 30 days ago? 30 days ago. Thirty days ago. And that's thirty-one now. Yes, right. It has to, has to sit on the books for thirty-one days, and so it's official, and we wanted to invite the, as I recall, the, vote was unanimous, and I wanted to invite council members to come down to the front, and all participate in signing the code. Appreciate that.
Synchronize.
You want this pen?
Does everybody, does everybody have theirs?
I just wanted to read this really quickly. This is the Ethics Code Acknowledgement Agreement, Maricopa Code, Sections 2-131 through 2-135. Says the Maricopa Code, Section 2-31(c) provides, as a prerequisite for exercising any power of office, each city official is required to read and agree in writing to comply with the provisions of these laws, regulations, policies, and Ethics Code. By my signature below, I, Christian Price, acknowledge and agree that I have been provided with a copy of the City of Maricopa Ordinance 13-12, Maricopa Code Sections 2-131 through 2-135, which constitutes the City of Maricopa Code of Ethics, or Ethics Code. By my signature below, I acknowledge that I have read and understand the Ethics Code. I agree that I will comply with the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, and the Code, laws, regulations, and policies of the city of Maricopa, including the Ethics Code. I'm proud to say that the city of Maricopa has now come up with this code through a lot of hard work, through each of the individuals on this council. I'm proud that this day has come, and I'm happy that each of us were able to sign this, and moving forward, each of our council candidates, as they are elected, will also be required to sign this. And so I think it's a very good day for Maricopa. So I thank you. This is a resolution of the mayor and city council, authorizing the city manager or head designee to execute a reallocation certificate for 18.27 acres of land that will not be included in the Regional Park Sports Complex. And Micah, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and council. For your consideration tonight is the reallocation certificate for the Copper Sky Development. So, do we, how do we flip these now? So, in November of 2008, Maricopa voters approved a ballot question authorizing city issue $26.5 million for parks, libraries, and recreation projects. In March of 2010, $20 million of bonds were used to finance the costs of what is now known as Copper Sky Regional Complex. $6.7 million within those bond proceeds were used to purchase approximately 141 acres for the Copper Sky area. During the design process, though, it was determined that not all of the land was needed for recreation purposes. And per city council's direction, approximately 18 acres were preserved for future commercial development. That land is in the yellow, on the east side of 341. And it is approximately eight acres on the, 8.27 on the north, and about nine on the south. And those are, that's the land we wanna technically buy back. So as commercial development was not included in the ballot question approved by voters, we had to find a solution to buy back the land so we wouldn't be in violation of the bond question. What we did was, staff worked in cooperation with our bond council, determined the most cost-effective solution. Originally, we had planned to use CIP funds to buy that approximately $800,000 of land out. What we came up with was a solution to use the interest paid to date on the whole site. So what we found was a $250,000 saving in the city CIP, we were able to use all the interest payment to buy back the land. Should city council approve the resolution authorizing the execution, the finance director will go forward and sign the reallocation certificate, and those documentations will be kept in the certificate file, and then at this point, we'll begin to go forward per city council's direction and market the site. Any questions?
Council questions? Councilman Potter?
Mike, if you could go back to the screen regarding the actual buyback, using interest payments versus...
CIP.
CIP funds? How, if you can, I know it's a little technical, but how, how would that work? Would the process work, and why does that, and other than saving, they get that $20,000, but how does, how does it work that it's a better way to go? And then how does it save money? Where, how did you discover that that works better?
Mayor, Councilmember Potter, in working with staff and bond council, the attorneys found that interest payments made on the bond purchases were eligible contributions for the buyback. So we've made approximately three, you know, we have made three interest payments on that debt to date. That amount was sufficient enough to buy back the land.
So in other words, money that's already been paid in interest payments can be used as a credit to purchase...
Correct.
The land in question?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Yes, Councilman Kimball?
Move to approve, Mayor.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And last but not least, we have item 10.6. Mayor and city council shall possibly take action to cancel or reschedule the January 7th, 2014 city council regular and work session meetings. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Just wanted to direct it to the city manager, sort of, and ask her opinion on whether this should be rescheduled, or can we afford to cancel it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we can afford to cancel the meeting.
Okay, so, follow-up to Vice Mayor Farrell's question, we're not gonna be too far behind on anything. I know that in the past, we've traditionally canceled that first meeting in January, but just as a further clarification.
Yes, we've been anticipating that this may happen, so we moved some things up to today, and we've moved some things back to the 21st of January.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Farrell?
I move to cancel, cancel the January 7th, 2014 meeting.
Support. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes the last official meeting of the year. So, thank you very much, we appreciate you attending, and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, and everything in between. And we'll see you next year. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Yeah, we actually need to move, let me rephrase that, if you would resend that, please. I need a motion to move to e-session, please.
What's moved is moved, man.
Sorry.
So move.
So we have a motion and a second to move to e-session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.